I'd like to call this meeting the Clay County Commission to Order. We will begin with our invocation. Administrator, when you are prepared.
Please join us in an attitude of prayer. God in heaven, we in this chamber give thanks to you for the blessings of this county and for the skill and dedication of those laboring for the common good. We ask that you guide and direct our meeting so that it is full of wisdom, productivity, and respect for one another. Thank you for helping us to accomplish our work and goals this day. Amen.
Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Nolte?
Here.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Here.
Commissioner Thompson?
Here.
That brings us to approval of the agenda. Is there a motion related to approval of this evening's, or this afternoon's agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as printed.
Motion's been made for the approval of this afternoon's agenda. Are there any comments or discussion?
No discussion.
Seeing none, you're recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Meeting scheduled, Administrator?
Yes, Commissioners. The next meeting will be a business session next Wednesday, August the 10th, at 6:00 PM here in the chambers.
Thank you. There are no honorary resolutions, there are no public hearings, and there is no consent agenda this afternoon, so that brings us to our regular agenda. The first item is 2022-230. Administrator?
Yes, Resolution 2022-230 is consideration of an agreement for a work zone enforcement program between Missouri Highway and Transportation Commission and the Clay County Sheriff's Office. Captain Amy Agdarion is here to provide information to the Commission.
Please proceed.
Good afternoon, Commission. Captain Amy Agdarion, Clay County Sheriff's Office. This is a request from the Sheriff's Office to enter into agreement with MoDOT for traffic enforcement in work zones specifically. So, I know we have several other MoDOT agreements, but this one is a longstanding agreement we have with MoDOT to receive funding for overtime patrols and traffic enforcement in those work zones on the highways. And there is no, there's no match, nothing. This is just for cost of salary and overtime for personnel.
Okay, and that sounds great. Always good to hear money coming in.
There you go.
Are there any questions or comments from the Commission?
No questions, thank you.
No questions, thank you.
Very well. Anyone else wishing to comment? Seeing none, this feels like a consent agenda item?
I agree.
Very well, 2022-230 will be on consent. That brings us to 2022-231. Administrator?
Yes, Commissioners. Actually, I'd like to introduce Resolution 2022-231 and Resolution 2022-232 together. They are similar and are companion action items from the Commission. So, the first Resolution 231 is consideration of a grant application with the Missouri Department of Transportation, Highway Safety, and Traffic Division for a dedicated impaired driving enforcement program with the Clay County Sheriff's Office. And in addition to that, the second Resolution, 2022-232, is consideration of modifying the existing grant that we have for the same program this year with the Department of Transportation, Highway Safety, for the dedicated impairment driving enforcement program. And Captain Agdarion is here to talk about the new grant for the 2223 year and also the proposed amendment to the existing grant.
Please proceed.
All right. Captain Amy Agdarion, Clay County Sheriff's Office. So, county administrator right is correct in this. These are companion items, and it's a little bit orthodox, the way we're presenting this, but this is the first time that we are asking for approval to apply for this grant because it is going to require some personnel payment from the county. And we, obviously, we're not going to apply for something and obligate the county to funding without having this discussion and having Commission approval. So, the current grant that we have, the dedicated impaired driving grant, has been off and running since last October. We have two full-time deputies in that position, or in those positions, fully funded by the grant. It also purchases two vehicles. The way this grant is written, the second year of the current grant, the two people that we have in those positions will be funded at 75%. So, they're, we're asking for a 25% match from the county to keep those two people in place. This new grant also asks for two additional personnel for the dedicated impaired driving unit, funded at 75% also. This is just the way the grant has been worded this year. There is no 100% match for any of the positions anymore. So, essentially, we're asking for your approval to apply for a grant for four personnel in this unit, funded at 75%. Two of them are currently in place. We're asking for two additional, and then the 25% match for all four of them. I hope I have not really muddied the waters. Commissioner?
I think, I think we probably can get a handle on that with a couple of questions to clarify. I think we'll be just fine.
The other thing, Captain, you might mention about the vehicle.
So, the reason that we are presenting the modification as a companion item to this application request is because, all right, this grant that we're asking for approval to apply for includes two new vehicles for the two new positions. Because of the trouble we're having getting vehicles ordered and in service, MoDOT has agreed to modify our current contract by adding $120,000 to this year's grant to purchase the vehicles if next year's grant is approved. So, this is a two-step issue. We're asking for consideration of the additional personnel costs to apply for next year's grant, and if that is approved, asking at the same time for acceptance of the modification to this year's grant so that we can purchase the vehicles.
So, if I've got this right, we are obligating ourselves to, to the two vehicles that are going to be giving us money for them that may or may not cover the vehicles. Is that correct?
No, it will cover the vehicles. Basically, if I boil it down to, if you say, you know what, we're really not on board with, with funding essentially an entire personnel position because you've got four people at 25%, if you're not interested in doing that, then we're not going to modify the current contract because there's no need.
Are we being asked to go ahead and allocate funding at a 25% level on those at this time, or is that going to be a subsequent resolution?
No. This resolution, this 231, this is, this is our, our request for your approval to apply for the grant with MoDOT for the current two positions we have, funded at 75%, and an additional two positions funded at 75% plus two vehicles and some training and other things. But, all of, the vehicles would be at 100%, the training would be at 100%. But if you approve 231, we're asking for a modification to move the 120,000 for the vehicles for the additional two positions to this year current grant so we can buy them and have them in place by October, which is when the MoDOT grant takes effect.
Okay. I'm trying to figure out where, when you want the 25% supplement to those. Is it going to be in the next budget?
It will be, oh, well, actually, Victor, it's going to be at the end of our current budget because MoDOT grants start October 1st. So, there would need to be some modifications to the current, some re-appropriations to the current budget because of the October 1st start. So, yes, we would be asking for the additional personnel dollars starting October 1st.
And do we know what that dollar figure is going, I mean, not, I don't know that, since we're not, we're obligating ourselves to go forward, but we're not really allocating the money. Is that, am I got the right distinction?
Well, to the Captain's point, because of this year's grant, and we have those two individuals that we hired last October, that grant runs out. And so, by applying for next year's grant, then in essence, MoDOT would be giving us 75% starting in October for the two existing positions. So, to her point, we will need to modify this year's budget. But included in that grant proposal is two additional officers that would begin in 2023, which we would fund in next year's budget, 25% of their salary. So, that total for the four positions at 25% is a financial obligation of about $73,500.
That's what I was looking for, was the number.
Oh.
Yeah, so that, I was wanting to see if we, if we approved this, what we would be, and I guess we're sort of obligated because we can apply for the grant and at some point, I guess, not apply for the grant, but I wanted to make, I wanted to see just how obligated we were and at roughly what dollar level, and at what point would, would that $73,000 then be a subsequent resolution? Or, we're not approving that here today, or we wouldn't be.
No, this right now-
We're obligating ourselves, but we're not paying it out.
Right. You'll obligate us. If you agree to direct to the Sheriff's Office to apply for the grant, then we're obligating some additional funds in this year's budget, beginning in October for the two current positions, and then next year for all four positions for 25% through October. And then, we will keep our fingers crossed that MoDOT has the program again next year in October.
Well, one of the reasons I was wanting that was to see if this would be, to determine consent or regular. It sounds to me like, I mean, it sounds like it's okay to go consent, but on the other hand, it's complicated enough to where I would, and we are obligating ourselves, although not to a dollar certain. I, I think I'd like to throw it open to the other Commissioners and get their thoughts.
I think we covered a lot of the questions that I would have. I would feel comfortable putting this on regular, just to make sure that we have all the, the technicalities figured out, but that's where I stand on it.
I agree with you. Commissioner Carpenter?
Thank you. So, it sounds like a great program. Thank you for applying for the grant and getting that, you know, the 75% match is good and plus a couple of new vehicles, I'm sure is good to add to the inventory. So, two questions. One, a county of our size is, is four full-time positions doing this kind of work? In the opinion of the Sheriff's Office, is, is that warranted and necessary? I assume your position is yes, but I, but it, you know, we, we've gone to two and now we're going to four, so, you know, a big increase over the last couple of years. And then, just sort of a, in addition to that, if the grant from MoDOT were to be temporary and they don't extend it indefinitely into the future, what would you envision doing with those four full-time employees?
To your first question, yes, we do believe that it is, is warranted that we could support a four-person unit dedicated to driving impaired. I don't have those statistics with me right now, but certainly before the next meeting, I could get you that information if you wanted some additional. To your second question, the hope would be that the Sheriff's Office would absorb those positions into our current personnel.
And so, that, you know, would of course take it from a $75,000 cost to something closer to $400,000. Is that fair to say? Because it, it says that the state matches, that the total grant is $420,000, that the state's going to pay 350.
Right, right. We, at, at that point, we would either have to come to the Commission and, and ask for additional personnel positions, or we would have to reallocate those personnel into other places in the Sheriff's Office where openings existed.
Gotcha. And do we have any sense, because I mean, you know, that's an extra three or $400,000 a year in personnel, so do we have a sense if MoDOT is envisioning this as a long-term partnership?
Yes. This is, we, we have been working with MoDOT grants for as long, I mean, at least back to 2012, when I became aware of them. So, we've had these grants around for a very long time. The dedicated driving impairment is new to us, but it is not a new program. It's my understanding that Jackson County has had, had this program in, this particular grant in place for at least five or six years, and they, they're now, well, I don't want to muddy those waters by getting down to the bottom-out point of matching, but they've been functioning with the, the DWI unit in place for that length of time and still are able to expand it. So, I think they've expanded, I don't want to give numbers, but I know they've expanded from the initial two that they had on patrol.
Okay. But did you, did you say that the matching percent does go down over time?
It will bottom out next year at 50/50.
With, with Jackson County, or with us?
With us, too. So, it go, it went from 100 this year-
Right.
-to 75, to 50/50, and it, that's where it holds. It doesn't drop below 50/50.
Okay. Thank you.
You're, you're welcome. Yeah.
All right. Any further questions or comments? I think it's wholly appropriate that we go on regulars.
I agree, yep.
Very well. So, 2022-231 and 232 will appear on the regular agenda for our next meeting. Thank you. That brings us to 2022-23, excuse me, 253. Please proceed.
Resolution 2022-253 is consideration of a sole source agreement with a vendor known as Keystone Public Safety Incorporated for annual software maintenance for the Sheriff's Office, and Captain Agdarion is here to provide additional information.
Please proceed.
Captain Amy Agdarion, Clay County Sheriff's Office. This is a request to approve Keystone Public Safety as a sole source vendor for our records management system. Keystone has been the Sheriff's Office records management system since approximately 2002. We took our first report in the system in 2003. And as you know, we are currently working with another vendor, Central Square, to migrate over, and that project is ongoing, but we have to keep a contract with Keystone until we get the data migrated over and go live with Central Square. So, we are just requesting a sole source for Keystone so that we can maintain the integrity of our data until we can move it over to our next RMS system.
So, it's a transitional kind of thing?
It is. Mm-hmm. Yes, I imagine this will probably be the last time we request a sole source status for Keystone.
Okay. Questions?
No questions. Thank you.
No questions, thank you.
This looks as though it involves expenditure of some monies, or is this just a contract?
Yes, this will involve some expenditures at some point.
That's what I kind of got the feeling. So, really, regular agenda is where we need to-
Yes, I would say so.
Okay, very well. 2022-350, 253, excuse me, will appear on next week's regular agenda. That brings us to 2022 Ordinance 18. Administrator?
Yes, with the Commission's indulgence, I'd like to introduce the next five ordinances together. There is a similar theme here with 2022 Ordinance 18, 19, 20, 21, and 22. All of these, except for Ordinance 2022, so Ordinance 18 through 21 are really the acceptance of grants that the county has received. And the last ordinance, Ordinance 2022, is actually receipt of a donation. And so, several of these will actually, the grant receipt is over two fiscal years. Some of the grants, all receipts will occur this year, and we'll walk you through those particular programs. But, you know, it's very important to notify staff on a great job of acquiring the grants. So, these total around $20,000 that the county will be receiving between this year and next year in for, in our juvenile office. And so, Teri Hargrave is here from the Office of Dispute Resolutions to talk about each one of these grants in the program and answer any questions that you have.
Thank you. I think it sounds like, since they're all pretty similar, I might just take a quick glance as we take each one, and if a Commissioner has a question, I could bring that up, but, but if that isn't the case, just, we'll just keep going, rolling through this, and then ask for any questions or comments at the end of that.
Perfect.
Please proceed.
Hi, Teri Hargrave, Director of the Office of Dispute Resolution. We are very, very lucky that we have a lot of grant funding, and all of our programs are primarily grant-funded, including these. This is for our Domestic Resolutions Relations Fund. The first one is for our Can Engage Parents Program. This provides legal services to parents who do not already have a parenting plan on file, but kids have been taken into custody to, due to abuse and neglect. We just need to establish parenting so that they can be placed with the other parent.
Okay. Next one?
Next. Next one, Domestic Mediation Services. Pretty much sums up that one. We just provide mediation to families.
Keep going, we're good.
Next one is Parenting Court. This is for parents who are involved in Division 8's Parenting Court. We provide a focus on the father class to the dads in there. It is a six-week course. This covers the facilitators' costs.
Proceed.
Lastly, we also ask, this is a new one this year. It is for ex parte services. So, our ex parte needs are going up down at the courthouse. We are lacking on weekday and weekend services. I applied for this grant, and they have given us some money to help with those services.
Okay. And then, we've got one more to go?
Yes. This is a donation from Orshlin. I reached out to businesses in the Clay County area, and Orshlin reached out and donated $500 for our juvenile programs.
I'm sorry, who is it that donated?
Orshlin Foundations.
Of course. But it seems to me that they certainly are entitled to at least a letter of hard gratitude once we get through this. Is that something that we can put together pretty easily, I suspect? Very well. So, we've, we've heard that in grouping, and there weren't any questions about any of the individual items. Does anybody have any discussion or questions about either the group or want to go back and revisit one of the issues?
I have no questions, and always, Teri. It's great to see you up here.
You, too.
I love seeing you to come up because I know it's always about receiving grants, and I'm always happy to give that a big yes, but if you ever need anything, let us know.
Thank you. We also just got approved for 2500, for, or 25,000 from the Division of Youth Services, so I'll be back up here soon.
Wonderful.
Yeah, no, same. Just thank you for always staying on top of these grants and applying and getting them and, you know, for good causes. So, thank you.
Yeah, we certainly do appreciate that. Could you give us the total one more time? I'd just like to hear it.
I think it was 25? 20, 20.
Very good. Thank you very much. We appreciate your hard work.
Thank you.
Seems to me that consent would be appropriate.
I support consent, yeah.
Those five items will then appear on consent for our next meeting. That brings us to 2022-229.
Resolution 2022-229 is consideration of an amendment to an existing service contract with J.F. Ryan Associates. County Assessor Baldwin is here to provide information to the Commission.
Please proceed.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Tracy Baldwin, Clay County Assessor. What this is, is an amendment to the original contract for J.F. Ryan, the appraisers that we use for the LaClede case. And it was just an amendment because there were some extra funds considered when they actually did depositions in, in court proceedings.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions or comments?
No questions, thank you.
No questions.
Okay. And so, this is, we're, we're giving them money for the extra work that they had to do?
Yeah, the original contract was for 25,000, I believe, $250 an hour. When, when they actually had to give depositions in the case, they actually increased their hourly rate to $350 an hour, and this is just an amendment to correct that, to get them paid the rest.
Okay.
And if I may, Commission, I don't believe there's extra, that there's going to be an extra expenditure of money. It's still within the same 25,000, I believe.
Right, yeah, yes.
So, it's not extra money. It's just a reflection that for trial work, there's a different rate.
Yeah.
And to be honest, I think this was something that was agreed on well over a year ago and just didn't make it through the last amendment.
Yeah, this felt like a consent to me, unless anybody has a different opinion.
Yeah, I would, I would certainly concur.
Very well. The 2022-229 will appear on consent for next week. Thank you. That brings us to 2022-249. Administrator?
Resolution 2022-249 is consideration of a term and supply contract with twin traffic marking for road striping, and Deputy County Administrator Walters is here to provide information.
Please proceed.
Good afternoon, Commission. Carl Walters, Deputy County Administrator for Clay County. We went out for bid for a term and supply for painting our roads and doing the yellow-white stripe, and twin traffic slash K&amp;G striping was the only bid that we got, and we have our micro-surfacing that we'll be doing this year to turn around. We'll have to stripe it as well, you know, how weather gets with people at night and stuff to see the roads and the edges and things. So, we need to keep the upkeep on that striping and things for our roads.
Okay. Questions or comments?
No questions, thank you.
No questions, thanks.
I'm thinking consent, is that okay?
I support consent, yep.
Very well. 2022-249 will appear on consent for our next meeting. That brings us to 2022-255. Administrator?
Resolution 2022-255 is consideration of the approval and acceptance of roads into the county road system and release the letter of credit for the Oak Ridge subdivision. Deputy County Administrator Walters is here to provide information.
Please proceed.
Good afternoon, Commission. Carl Walters, Deputy County Administrator for Clay County. This is the acceptance of the roads into Clay County and a lease, a release of credit from Pony Express Bank of $19,753 to the developer, Star Development. We have done our due diligence with the two-year development maintenance, keeping an eye on it, making sure that the asphalt stayed in place. They had to do some repairs before this all came to, for approval. The storm drains, we checked all the seating and everything. That means that our asphalt, lazy back curb, the seating, and the storm drains are all approved, and the signage is put up for their approval.
Okay. Questions or comments?
No questions, thank you.
No questions, thank you.
Did you have something you'd like to say? Please come on up and, and state your name.
My name is Linda Hetzel, and I'm at 13318 Plattsburgh Road. And I would like to speak to this letter of recommendation, specifically, Item 10, all erosion and silt controls have been properly installed and maintained. You've seen me here before about this development. We have the unfortunate experience of being the entire south property line of this development and have been raising concerns and requesting enforcement of water pollution control and best management practices for the land disturbance since 2017, and they're still washing our real estate away. So, I do know that the Missouri Department of Natural Resources cited STAR with eight violations of water pollution control in February, and I had correspondents as late as July that said they're still working on those. So, our experience is that it's not being executed effectively. Now, it may be according to some of the existing requirements, but in practice, we still have a tremendous problem with it and have gotten various responses. Even some rock check dams were suggested in 2019, and nothing happened. So, in part, it's due to extreme weather events, high volume, high velocity, short duration rains, but that wasn't the case back in 2017 necessarily. So, I would at least suggest that the Department of Natural Resources violations be addressed, and there's some, some information behind the Freedom of Information Act that I haven't gotten to yet. Happy to answer any questions.
Questions or comments?
No questions, thank you.
Okay. Deputy Administrator, could you, are you aware of the issues, and could you address them in, in some manner?
Deputy Administrator Carl Walters, no, I'm not aware of anything that's came about to this part of it, but I know that as far as the road and the curb that I had mentioned and the storm drains that are within our right-of-way are, are in compliance. So, anything that's on that south property that she is referring to would probably have to be referred to by the PMZ, Kip Jones.
Mr. Jones, would you like to make some comment?
Yes, please. Kip Jones, Planning and Zoning Manager. So, I've worked with Ms. Hetzel throughout the process. At one time, they did have a land disturbance permit through the county. That has been closed because they reseated the property sufficiently enough to meet our standards. So, I've discussed that with her. She is downhill of the proposed development. We do- We do weekly or monthly inspections on the silt fence and the erosion control. I have not seen any signs of silt washing onto her property. Ms. Hetzel's main complaint to the Planning and Zoning Department has been the amount of stormwater that goes to her property to the south. That was studied by the county's on-call engineer, and it met all the requirements at the time that this development was approved.
Are you aware of any other concerns raised by other property holders in the area?
As with any development, we have contact with the adjacent property owners, but as far as I know, they've all been resolved.
Questions or comments?
Thank you.
No questions, thank you.
Just to be clear, Deputy Administrator, the, if there is a problem, that problem is not related to the criteria that's necessary to execute this particular thing? So if there's a problem, it would be outside of the parameters of what this agreement with STAR would be? Is that a correct assumption?
That is correct. It's outside of our parameters of what you're approving.
Yeah, while it might be something we would need to address, it is not something that would be fall within the bailiwick of this particular agreement. And so we would be, it's something we could look at later possibly, but the thing is, it does not impact on this particular document.
Yes, sir. And as Kip would say, that if this continues on, I mean, she could bring it forth to us, which this is the first I've heard of it, and I know Kip's been talking with her, having conversations, and I don't have a problem. I mean, anybody calls any time about any kind of erosion control and stuff, and if it's within our right-of-way and stuff, we'll take care of it and make sure that the resident's okay. But if they, he's already inspected it, and our engineers already inspect it, I don't know how much further to take that because it's outside of our boundaries, ours, this highway.
Anything from Deputy Administrator? And I think the lady wanted to make a further comment. Please come on up to the podium.
Linda Hetzel again. Well, I would just, I guess I need to understand why you wouldn't look at the Missouri Department of Natural Resources violations that have to do with silt and erosion control, because they do fall within the, as I understand the letter. So it could be, very possible, I don't understand the letter, but the violations were about erosion control and silt management. And I've documented with stills and videos since 2017 of the violations of best land management practices. And the silt tubes that are in the drains now are totally occluded from five years of erosion. So they're not doing much more anymore.
Yeah, what I'm personally trying to sort out is if this is a problem, and it seems to be a problem separate from this document and one that we should probably examine, so maybe the way to proceed on this would be for Mr. Jones to go ahead and provide that information that you gave to our Deputy Administrator and maybe get you involved in the conversation so that we can see what, you know, what the resolution is. Since the Deputy Administrator had just heard about this, it's kind of hard to put the, you know, to ask him for any solutions. The only thing that I can think that would bear, that he could comment upon is, as presented, if this issue impinged on this agreement, it's his opinion that it does not. With that, I think I would still recommend consent, but possibly with the idea that we would revisit this and maybe take it off consent if it was warranted later. Does that sound like a reasonable way to proceed?
Commissioner, as long as we can come back to Ms. Hetzel and have conversations with her, I'm comfortable if this does not pertain to her issues moving forward with this. I have spoken with her previously on a couple of different matters, and I just don't want her concerns to go unaddressed.
And that's something that I do want to make sure of, because the thing is, if it is a separate issue, you know, we don't want it to hold up one thing, but the thing is, if, but also if it is a concern and a problem, we don't want to let it go by the boards either. So I'm trying to, I'm trying to kind of parse my way through that.
And I don't want to leave the impression that I was here asking for a solution. I was really, you know, looking at the letter, item 10, "All erosion and silt controls have been properly installed and maintained", and the Department of Natural Resources says, says, "No, they're not." So, I mean, the other, all the other issues are obviously long history and very complicated, so I don't want you to think I'm asking for a solution tonight. I just, you know, I'm looking at any point in the process to try to, try to have it be a better outcome.
Commissioner Harvey?
Thank you. I forgot a quick question from Mr. Walters, if I could.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. So if we take possession of the road into the county road system, and if hypothetically, the erosion and silt controls have not been properly installed and maintained, and we were to find that as a county after taking possession, will that fall on the, under our obligation to fix that?
Well, in, on our part, as a highway department, accepting that road into the, that subdivision into our system, basically, our erosion part of it's done. The erosion control, if I'm not mistaken, falls underneath P&amp;Z to make sure that the people that are building those houses and the empty lots, that they have erosion control set for that piece of property, and that the young lady brought up, the complaints from the MDNR that are on the south property, not so much on, focused on our roadway.
Okay, so there's no scenario in which we approve this, take the, take it into the county road system, in which we are then obligated to fix the erosion problem?
Correct. It basically, like I said, it basically is the homeowner that's building the property to put the erosion control up, and that the building inspector turn, make sure that they're following by code to make sure that their erosion control and everything's put up, and that, again, falls under Mr. Kip Jones.
Okay, and then the last question is just, you know, number 10, the all erosion and silt controls have been properly installed and maintained. That inspection is done by your department?
Oh, within our right-of-way, yes, and the seating and everything has been done. Everything that's off of that right-of-way goes to another department.
Okay, and the findings by the state you don't think would apply to that?
Not on my part, no.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it.
Just one more note of clarification. We're talking about the agreement is with our highway department. The erosion problems are more of a planning, zoning issue, is that?
Correct. What we're accepting here today is within our right-of-way, 60-foot right-of-way. And as I had mentioned, it's a storm sewer, inlets, the asphalt, the curb and gutter, and, like I said, the seating of the right-of-way within those boundaries. Anything beyond that falls underneath P&amp;Z, if that makes sense to you.
Yeah, it does. What I'm, I'm kind of where I was before, and that is to say we put it on consent, but we ask the Deputy Administrator just to, you know, review it with Mr. Jones. If he sees any reason that it does impinge, then to communicate that to the Administrator, and we can move it from consent to regular agenda at that time and take it up. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I would support that, thanks.
Okay.
Does the staff feel as though they understand the disposition of the commission? Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments? In that case, 2022-255 will appear on consent. That brings us to 2022-251. By the way, thank you to the lady who came and commented. Thank you for being here. Please feel free to come at any time. As I said, that brings us to 2022-251. Administrator?
Resolution 2022-251 is the consideration of transfer of funds within a fund in the Park Fund. We're asking to reallocate some funding in a line item, moving it to the appropriate fund for the purchase of fuel for the Camp Branch Marina for resale for our boaters. And Director Driscoll is here to provide additional information.
Please proceed.
Good afternoon. Mike Driscoll, Parks Department. Like everybody else, the high fuel prices have eaten up budgeted amounts very quickly this year. We asked this transfer of 25,000 from budget amount and fee collection, 731-220, to the Marina Budget, 743-395-1, just to cover the cost of fuel for resale at the Marina for the rest of the season. And that's, you know, basically a couple more months. And hopefully, that will get us through. And that is all we're wishing to do, is transfer the money so we can use it.
Thank you. Questions or comments?
No questions, thank you.
No questions.
Thank you.
I think for a transfer, we can go to consent. Does that sound good to everybody?
I agree, yeah.
Therefore, 2022-251 goes to consent. That brings us to 2022-252. Administrator?
Resolution 2022-252 is a consideration and approval of the sale and disposal of surplus items for auction. And Deputy County Administrator Coons is here to provide additional information.
Please proceed.
Good afternoon. Donna Coons, Deputy County Administrator. Yes, our first item here today is for the release and disposal of our electronics. You have attached the itemized list in your packet. It's old TVs, it's computers, it's old hard drives. It is basically things that have aged out and outused their usefulness. We have a garage that we call the electronics garage, and the garage is now full. And we would like to get rid of the old expired items.
Very well. It's my understanding that you're not exactly burdened with an excess of storage space.
No, no, we do have a slight storage problem here at the county.
Right, so yeah, the ability, I mean, not only should we move this merchandise, but also from the point of view of there's only so much space to be storing our extra items.
Well, and this equipment, it has outused its useful purpose, so, or it's reached, or it's obsolete now.
Very good. Questions or comments?
No questions, sounds great.
No questions.
Very well, 2022-252, consent?
Agreed.
Very well. 2022-252, we want the consent agenda for the next meeting, 2022-254, please.
Resolution 2022-254 is the consideration of a request to use county grounds by the Historic Downtown Liberty Organization for the Old Liberty High School reunion and celebration. And Deputy County Administrator Coons will provide additional information.
Please proceed.
Again, Donna Coons, Deputy County Administrator. Yes, this is from the Liberty High School, the HDLI group. They are doing a multi-year class reunion, 1932 to 1985, is the group that is wanting to get together. They're going to be around the square, they're going to have a band. But in particular, they are asking permission from the county if they could use our 201 East Mill Lot and mark that off as handicap parking, and they're going to have golf carts to shuttle those individuals up around the square to the bands, and also use our Rooney Justice Center Lot for just regular parking for other individuals.
Okay. Questions or comments?
Uh, no questions, thank you.
No questions, thank you.
Sounds like a consent issue to me. Twenty, so 2022-254 will be on consent. We seem to have three items that are grouped together. Administrator?
Yes, the following three items are companion items. The first is 2022 Ordinance-23, along with Resolution 2022-256 and Resolution 2022-257. All of these documents and approval considerations have to do with the highway project, excuse me, the runway project that we have going on out at the airport. So the Ordinance 23 is approval of the contract with Missouri Highway and Transportation Commission for the block grant for the runway rehabilitation project. Resolution 25, 256 is an agreement with Burns &amp; McDonald for services and consulting services on that project. And then Resolution 257 is awarded the construction contract with Superior Bowen. And Deputy County Administrator Coons is here to provide additional information about this great project.
Please proceed.
Donna Coons, Deputy County Administrator. Yes, we're actually very excited to be here. This started in 2021 where we applied for the grant. We had to go through the, for the program. It took a while going through MoDOT, but we have now been formally awarded at 90% to pay for the project, at 90% from MoDOT, to do the revitalization project for our runway. Part of the revitalization is not only the surface of the runway, but it also includes seating on the side and new runway lights down the sides. And that is item number one. The second one is to continue to have Burns &amp; McDonald continue on as the project manager to oversee the project. They do the testing to make sure that the material is the proper material, the proper depth, and is meeting all the specifications by MoDOT for the runway. And the third item is to award the contract for the material and the lane of the runway to Superior Bowen.
Any questions or comments from the commission? That is a pretty, pretty big deal.
Yeah, no, just a comment, which is, you know, I know this has been ongoing for a while now, and I'm sure a lot of work has gone into it. So obviously, getting a multimillion-dollar influx into our county infrastructure is a wonderful thing, so to everybody involved with making that happen, I think that's a big win for the county. Thank you.
And no questions, but no, I'm very excited about this, coming out to the highway and getting this, sorry, at the airport. Sorry, I'm sulking about Carl over there and all his crazy. But yeah, so I'm really excited for this out at the airport and getting this going.
Well, you know, our highway department gets all those ribbon cuttings for bridges, so I'm thinking that maybe we can jump on the bandwagon and we could ribbon-cut for the new airport runway. I was feeling jealous, so I want to get it part of the program.
Love it. No, I love being able to fix up our infrastructure. I think this is wonderful. Thank you, Donna. Thank you.
Well, the airport is, I think, pretty obviously a, an asset that we need to use to its fullest, and this is certainly going to put us in a position where we are able to make better use of it and as fully used as possible. So it sounds like a great, a great program, great road we're going down here, so, thank you.
I think we probably ought to do regular on this one.
I do, too.
Probably.
Very well. Those three items will be on the regular agenda. That brings us to the end of our agenda on regular items. Is there a motion for disposition of the issues that we've just discussed?
Commissioners, if I could ask your indulgence, we have under discussion a couple of items, and there are some proposed resolutions based upon your discussion that we might want to bring forward to next week's meeting. So if you could defer your motion on consent and regular agenda items until we conclude the discussion item, and then that could be considered.
Sure. So go ahead and proceed with, there's two items here. Do we want to consider them separately or do we want to consider them as a group?
Well, I'll talk about them as a group, but we'll have two separate presentations and give the commission opportunities to discuss each one of the themes separately.
Proceed.
So as the commission may recall, we've had some discussions about projects for county that needed to be done that could be potential utilization of ARPA funding, especially from the Second Trotch. And at the retreat that we had with the commissioners, we went through a number of different projects and sought feedback from the commission. So over the next several meetings, we will be coming back as staff and giving you a more in-depth presentation on those proposed projects, and I'm calling it by theme. So we have two themes today that we brought forward to you. One has to do with projects that have work to be done on our facilities, and one are projects that I'm deeming as more human resource projects. And so we'll present those to you separately. And we've kind of added a different step in the process. So today is to present those projects, have some feedback, and then the resolution that is proposed would be on next week's agenda that would really be, you would be authorizing the projects, and you would be expressing your intent to use those funds for these projects. We would then come back to you as our normal process and have a resolution of moving the funds and creating the budget and the project number for those projects. But because some of these, these and some that you will hear in the next few weeks have not been discussed during the budget process, we wanted to ensure that we had ample opportunity for presentation, answer your questions, and do our due diligence. So we've added sort of a different step that we've normally not done in the past. So that's what's before you on these resolutions is, after you hear about the projects, if you're interested, we would recommend moving this resolution forward next week. And really, what you're doing is authorizing us that you agree with the project, you agree with the intent of using ARPA funds for those projects, and then we'll come back as our normal process. So with that, I think I've stalled long enough to maybe get staff at the podium, and we will start with...
Just before you, I just want to clarify. So we're going to hear them today, and then you will be seeking consensus from the commission. then you will be seeking consensus from the commission, and then at that point, once that consensus and that advice from the commission is sought, then they will come up at a future meeting for a, in the usual manner with resolution approval.
Correct. This resolution that's on and in your packet today would be on next week's agenda for you to consider, but all you're considering is authorizing the project and the intent to do the, use the funding. We would come back with our normal resolution of moving the funds and creating the budget for the project. So, it's just an additional step.
Commissioners, feel comfortable with that process?
Thank you.
Yes.
Please proceed.
Okay. So, we'd like to start with 2022-258, which actually talks about, we're calling it the theme of facilities. So, we have six proposed projects before you that are included in the resolution that talks about what the project is, the funding source, and the estimated cost for the project. We have two presenters that will talk to you about the proposed projects, and we'll start with Teri Griffin from our highway department.
Teri Griffin, Highway Administrator. So, if you'll, are you doing the slideskip? You'll, oh, right here. Okay. Okay, so the first project is to repair and replace perimeter fencing at the highway department. The fencing on the highway department was installed in the 1980s and is very badly deteriorated in some areas. Along the north property line, there's a section of fence that has been completely removed, and neighbors are using the wooded areas of the county property to ride ATVs, to walk on the paths, and they're making paths through the wooded areas of the county property. Along the east property line, neighbors have unrestricted access to equipment sheds and to the vehicles and equipment that's stored there because a section of fence is missing. There's deteriorated fencing around the stormwater detention, detention pond, which allows easy access to the pond, and we know that nearby residents of their families sometimes fish in the pond and play on the pond bank after hours and weekends. So, this project will replace the missing or damaged fencing at specific locations to secure the county property, buildings, and equipment, and provide more security at the detention pond. The new fence is expected to be a woven wire fence, which is appropriate for a rural residential area, which is where we are, and the estimated cost to install the fence will be about $36,000. You can see on the screen, there's an aerial photo of the highway property. The yellow lines show the locations where the fencing will be located. At the north is the top, is a, at the top is the north property line, and if you look closely, you can see some of the trails that are kind of being cut by the ATVs through the county property. Along the east lot, east property line on the right, you can see how close the property line is to the equipment sheds that are there. You can see the roofs of the equipment sheds there, and then at the bottom, of course, is the detention pond and the location of the fencing that needs to be replaced there. These are some photos of the property. On the top, you can see the ATV trails that are, an ATV trail that's being cut through and some grass and yard clippings that's dumped on county properties by the nearby neighbors. This bottom center photo shows the, part of the east property line where the fence is missing, and you can see that it's really easy for the neighbors there to make their way onto county property just by walking across their backyard, basically. And then the other pictures show some of the deteriorated fencing around the pond. So, with that, I would be glad to answer any questions about this project before I move on to the next one.
Questions?
Please proceed.
Okay. The next one is, has two parts. One is the shop bay floor, and one is the shop office. Our service bay number one is used to repair vehicles and equipment and perform preventive maintenance and so forth. The floor is reinforced concrete and was installed when the building was constructed in the 1980s, and recently, staff noticed that the floor moves slightly whenever equipment is driven across it or heavy dump trucks. So, we had a preliminary engineering company, assessment done, and they drilled holes in the concrete floor and snaked a camera down there and found that the, there is a void underneath the floors where stormwater has seeped in over the years and gradually eroded the area. So, the concrete floor no longer has anything it rests on. It's, it's held up by its own strength. You can see the cracks in some of the floors, some of the cracks that are there that need to be repaired. So, the engineering assessment recommended mudjacking under the floors and then sealing the cracks and making sure that stormwater can't get in again and stopping the voids. The estimated cost for this work is about $10,000. The next part of this project will remove a broken tile floor in the shop office area. The tile flooring has been in place since about the mid 1990s, and you can see what a beating it's taken during that time from the, all the work-footed feats and heavy equipment and tools and whatnot that go across that floor on a daily basis. The floor is broken and uneven, and it presents a trip hazard for our employees and for visitors. Our plan is to remove the broken tile flooring and then strip and polish the underlying concrete floor, seal it, and then have a durable floor finish that's just concrete, should be very durable to withstand the daily wear and tear that we get out there, and should be very easy to maintain. And the estimated cost of this project is about $4,000. If you have questions, I would be glad to answer those.
No questions.
Proceed.
Well, I'm sorry.
What else is next? That's fine.
Deputy County Administrator Donna Kuntz. So, I'm here to talk to you about a couple of additional projects. One is being the building that we have renamed and called the Quick Building that's located on Franklin Street. We purchased this building in 2021. We are actively using half of the building, but up to this point, we have not gone in and rehabbed or reconfigured the other side of the, of the building, which was actively previously used as a bank. So, we have some heavy vault doors that we could turn into other rooms and other spaces. However, we do not have the combinations to those vault doors, and they pose a, quite a hazard. First of all, we don't have the equipment to remove or take those doors off, and certainly, we would not want those doors to become closed at any point or, or time. The other existing counter spaces was designed for low counters for, for bank tellers, and we would like to remove those areas and be able to move in like cubicle systems so that we could put multiple staff in there. We also, there are two existing enclosed offices. By removing one of the vault doors, we're, we'd like to convert one of these into a, a new office space as well as to another enclosed office space. Any questions about the Quick Building?
I have a question that is, that while we have the space, it's not being utilized at the moment, when we remodel that, how many square feet will that put available for active use?
Well, I didn't bring the exact square footage with me, Commissioner. I'm sorry.
Sorry about that.
I can give you that by, by next week. It is enough that we can house approximately 10 staff members over there, if that helps give you an idea of what we could do with the space.
That, that really is kind of what I was getting at. So, yeah, just kind of get an idea of how our, how much we will be able to reallocate and put to use and possibly relieve some, some other areas where we're maybe a little more cramped. Thank you.
The next topic I'd like to talk about is our Schrader roof. This roof has been on since 1967. It, we have, we'd like to replace it with a membrane roof, and I'm going to go ahead and advance to the next slide. The red circles indicate current places where we have water infiltration into the Schrader building. We have four different departments housed over at Schrader, so roughly three different departments are getting rained on at this particular time. Part of this project would not only fix the membranes that are damaged at this time, it also includes some repair of flashing. It includes repair of pitch pans, and we'll have to replace some wet installation that is currently under this. This next one shows, we had a thermal image scan done of the roof, which is why, because you can't necessarily tell by looking at the membrane roof where there's, the water is coming in from, and so we had those thermally scanned so we could see exactly where the water was coming from. Water travels, so just because you get a stained tile in one office, that's not necessarily where the roof leak is, and so we had to do some investigation to determine where we actually needed to make these repairs. Happy to answer any other questions.
Please proceed.
The last subject I'd like to talk about is, on behalf of our prosecutor's office, due to COVID and the backlog of, of cases, they have been dedicated or awarded three additional staff members. We have been already working this year on reconfiguring some of their, and this is a layout design of the new proposed space that we would be providing for them to house three new individuals, included with a, a conference room, and then some support staff also. But this picture probably tells it a little better. They have a very crowded space. They, they're very paper-intensive just by the nature of their work, and I, I sometimes think a picture can really say more than what I can stand up here and say, just by looking at the rows of files and the amount of the walls of cubicles. So, the three new individuals coming in actually will handle active cases, and they need to, not to be in a cubicle situation. They need to have the privacy to discuss cases and not necessarily anything that should be out there for the general office. And again, happy to answer any questions.
No, no questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So, this, we will then be, do you need anything from us today except that we would want to take it up next week and do our consensus next week?
Right. So, at this point, we, you know, are there any concerns or objections to any of the projects we're proposing? And the resolution does identify, again, the source of funding. So, as you recall, ARPA funding, but they're different pots. Majority of these are coming out of lost revenue, with the exception of the last project for the prosecutor's office that ties to public health category. And so, if the commission is good with that, we would like to move this resolution next week, which gives us all direction, and then we will come back with you with all the accounting information and moving the funds and setting up the projects and moving forward.
One question that I'm going to have, and perhaps it's best just to ask it now with, with something coming back next week, and that is, maybe whatever the latest assessment is of the Schrader, not the Schrader building, the old Annex Building, or the Annex Building. Obviously, we're putting roof on. It is necessary, but I, I'm just kind of wanting to get an idea of if, if there's any fresh insights into how feasible it is going forward, because it could easily turn into a money pit. So, if there is, and I, you know, I, whatever kind of insights, I'm not expecting a full-blown like evaluation, but if, if there's some observations that, that we could hear that might be helpful in our decision-making.
Steph actually has additional meetings scheduled with a firm that has worked on that building before to give insight to what it would take, what type of investment the county would need to make in the building, not only to address neglected maintenance issues to actually make it operational for today's environment, what that would be along with some other options for the commission to consider about possibly relocating. We've talked to the County Assessor's Office and the Collector about possibly downsizing at the Annex, and so we might be able to find a different location to provide those services in the same vicinity, but in a different facility. So, our intent is to give that information to the commission, a cost-benefit analysis and a recommendation. So, we hope to have something before you, so hopefully in September, about how do we proceed with that particular facility.
Thank you. I realize it's not the sort of thing you just sort of throw together on a, you know, a free afternoon, and, and there we are. You know, that, that's, that sounds good to me.
Well, just in terms of the projects in general, you know, it sound like necessary and good, good projects and very thoughtful, and just thank you to everyone for standing on topic. I'm grateful that we've got some ARPA funds that can help make some of these necessary improvements.
Commissioner Thompson?
No questions. I feel very comfortable with these worthy projects and comfortable for next week.
The only other concern that I, well, one of the other concerns I have, which is beyond our control, and that is with supply chain issues and the rest of it, through no fault of anybody in this government, clearly, we could find ourselves on a very long waitlist. Like I say, through no, through nobody's fault, just the circumstances we find ourselves in today. So, I think we all need to keep in mind when we're looking at projects like this, that delays for materials to be delivered are, unfortunately, may well be a familiar feature of, of life as we go down the road for these projects. So, I would just, I, I guess the thing that I would say was, we should keep that in mind, and I would counsel patience with one another as we work through it. Any further discussion? Very well. That brings us to comments on not, oh, excuse me. No, we wanted to go for the, I skipped over the disposition of the regular agenda.
Well, we've got actually...
We have one more.
One more discussion item as well.
We do have one more.
Oh, you're right. I'm sorry. I just...
No, that's fine.
I just saw one bullet point, so that brings us to 259 then.
And if I could ask, on the one we just discussed, is the thought consent or regular for next week?
To put it on for consideration?
Mm-hmm.
I think regular since that...
That's fine.
I'm comfortable with that. Sure.
Okay. Thank you. And the second theme of projects that we want to bring before you is tied to Resolution 2022-259, which in essence is, again, other projects, and we've grouped those together by theme, basically from human resources. And with that, Kim Callahan is here and would like to review these projects with you.
Please proceed.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Kim Callahan, Clay County Human Resources Manager. So, we have four different projects we're requesting funding for, and I'll go through them one by one. The first one is, we're requesting funds for job training through the Government Training Institute. We're actually requesting funds in the amount of $18,000, and that's for three years' training. This will accommodate up to 50 managers and supervisors. Okay? This is to develop supervisor training to ensure COVID mitigation and prevention practices are followed, along with appropriate protocol for COVID-positive employees. We've had an outbreak in the last month. Since January, it's been up and down. It's not going away, so we need to make sure we keep our training with our supervisors and managers up to the latest, up-to-date on COVID protocols. But with that, we are also going to include a series, a three-part series, that will include performance management, coaching and motivation, and managing conflict. And like I said, this was all, this will be conducted onsite, and it will be, it will cover, it's actually $6,000 per year, so that it will cover three years' training for our supervisors. Let's see. And our next one is...
Just a little on that, especially with the core competencies. So, there is certainly a benefit in investing in our supervisors and managers in these core competencies in being excellent supervisors. But we have seen, again, there have been some challenges in the workplace in dealing with COVID when you're short-staffed, and how do you address the issues that the employees that are here that are carrying the burden? And so, it comes to having good supervisors to help us through that process and to help our employees through that process. So, there will be an aspect of the training about dealing with conflict, because there can be conflict, and also, how do you manage workflow and work product when we're short-staffed because of COVID? So, there is sort of a benefit for our supervisors, not only in addressing COVID and what that has done to our workplace, but also helping them to be, you know, better managers. So, I think there's a benefit to
I do have something to ask on that then. It, it seems to me that this would be a good thing in that we would be able to perhaps not be as vulnerable to lawsuits. It shows good faith effort to make sure that we are handling these things in a way that would, would, and thankfully, we've not been much in that line, but, but certainly to where we are able to, I guess, maybe limit our liability a bit further, and perhaps the counselor is the person to ask on that particular thought, but what do you, what do you think?
Yeah, I mean, if we keep everyone on the same protocols and, you know, to protect our employees, plus the people that come into our buildings, you know, it's staff and, and residents that use the facility. So, it's basically to keep everyone in line with the latest updates, which I send out emails now, but I think it's better to get everyone together and do training.
And is a bit of a challenge. An individual's privacy for their health, and if they have COVID or exposed, it is private. On the other hand, you have employees that aren't at work, and so how does a supervisor address the concerns of other employees? address the concerns of other employees? And so, you know, I know Kim and her team has tried to address that as they've come up, but certainly, I think, having, you know, standardized protocols and training across the organization, I think, benefits the organization.
And that was kind of what I was getting at, was not just the benefit, but it also affords protection for the supervisors as well, that they have been trained. Please proceed. Was there any questions? No? Please proceed.
Okay. Okay. And the next one is a wellness financial program, and it's through the Ramsey Smart Dollar Program. And I've probably, you've probably all heard Dave Ramsey on the radio talking to people about their finances. And this is a program that our sheriff's department has utilized in the past, and they're thrilled with it. And we talked to them about it, and it's like, well, why can't we offer this to all of our employees, especially now during these times? So this part of, let's see, this actually will help to reduce stress with financial guidance through difficult times that are caused by COVID and inflation. Okay? This has, it has tools to help employees live within their means. It's accessible 24/7. And a couple of the comments directly from the sheriff's department, from some of their employees. One was, "It's amazing how much looking at your budget and spending every day can help you realize what your wants and true needs are. I love every dollar and seeing where everything is going and trying to spend less than I've budgeted." Another comment from an actual employee is, "Better management of overall household income, reducing credit card and student loan debt." And also, offering this program as part of our benefits package will make the county more competitive in recruiting. So that's also a good point. The funding that we're requesting is $24,000, which would cover three years of the program. And this will accommodate 500 full-time employees. It's all on a voluntary basis. And like I said, it's available 24/7. There's budgeting tools, there's video lessons and expert advice. It's just a really good program that I think would be, you know, help our employees at this time through the difficult times, help them stretch their dollar. And actually, you know, when, it'll help reduce stress levels, which will lower our health costs and improve employee productivity.
Questions? Is that mainly anecdotal? I mean, it does stand to reason, but that, this one I'm looking at and kind of, I'm not quite as seeing, I'm not connecting the dots quite as well with some of the others. So I think this is one I'm going to want to look at a bit more as we, as we go forward.
But I can certainly get you more information if you'd like it, you know, whatever you-
I'll kind of mull that over and get back to you.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Okay. And then we have the Tourism Coordinator Program that we would like to reinstate. Okay? And this would help to alleviate the negative impact COVID has had on tourism in the county. This actually, in 2021, that's when the tourism department was basically, you know, dismantled. Okay? In prior years, in 2019, '20, and '20, they had a $400,000 per year budget for tourism in the county. And in '21, it was put, it was down to $50,000. So it's basically dissolved. So what we're wanting to do is reinstate this program to enhance the county's competitiveness in the tourism market. Let's see. The funding that we're requesting is $250,000 for two years of wages and operations. And like, like I said, that is a small percentage of what was allocated in years before. So it's basically getting the program back up. It's going to provide us resources for the county to pursue regaining state designation status. We want to work with our partners in the region to promote the area to World Cup visitors, which is coming. So it's just, let's see, it actually is something that, to reinstate the tourism program, will bring money into the county and help all of our businesses.
I think this, I also like some information, more information. I've got some, but I'm not sure how much has been shared. But on the state funding that we'd be able to pull down, what kind of numbers we're talking about and what that would be used for, because it seems like this position is rather key to being able to do that. So I think I'd like a little bit more information when we, when we bring this before, is based on how that pulls into it and how that funding mechanism would work, just so we kind of know what it is that we're, what we're hitting towards. I guess, I'm sure the other commissioners have some information on it, but perhaps it's good that we kind of review that and all three hear the same thing that way.
Okay.
It gives us an idea of what road we're going down to and what we're expecting of the tourism coordinator. Perhaps even, you know, some kind of a, I mean, there's kind of a job description in there, that's something about what we would expect from this person.
Okay. And do you like amounts of the grants that we could apply for, that kind of information? Is that what you're asking?
Something like that, yeah.
Okay. All right. Okay. And last, but certainly not least-
Oh, I'm sorry. I forget.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I didn't get, I didn't realize we were at the bottom of the page. Go ahead.
Okay. Is the retention incentive. This is a program to retain current employees, especially designed to address lower salary positions with a one-time lump sum payment. Right now, in the vacancy trends, you can see that it demonstrates the high vacancy trend in the county. We have low wages that have made recruiting hard to compete with the private sector right now. We're seeing employees leave for higher-paid positions. You've heard the great resignation. You've, you know, that's, it's happening and has been happening since COVID has hit. People left work, they didn't come back to work. So latest information, we saw that job apps have dropped 32% in the last two years. So currently, 64%, 67% of county's employees fall below the 2020 average hourly wage of $25.48. Okay? So what we would like to do is launch this program to, to help employees, especially the lowered salaries employees. Okay? And the way we would do this, it would be, eligibility would be all full-time and regular part-time employees on the county payroll for 90 days, with the exception of elected commissioners and office holders, the county administrator and county councilors. Okay? For instance, the way this would work, a full-time employee with a salary rate of $25.48 and below, they would be eligible for a one-time lump sum amount equal to $1,400. Now, this would be, all IRS rules and regulations would be followed. Okay? We would do a special payroll for this one-time lump sum payment. So a regular part-time employee with a salary rate of below $25.48 would be eligible for a one-time lump sum of, say, $700. So a part-time employee would be a lower amount. Now, someone that is above that rate, say, $25.49, a full-time employee, it would be equal to $1,000. And that's, of course, with the tax deductions out of the separate payroll run that we do. Okay? And the way that we do this is, to launch this, the employees would execute, and it would be all voluntary on the employee's part. They would sign a memorandum of agreement for our employee retention program. And what we're looking at is having them sign that they are going to stay with us for a year, and we're going to help them with this retention incentive. And we're going to do, withhold all state taxes and the IRS regulation taxes. Now, if, this thing that the employee would sign would state that if they leave before the year, they would, it would be prorated, and they would have to pay back the amount that is prorated on their last check, which is kind of why we're putting it at 90 days, because an employee accrues 90 days vacation. That's kind of what we're looking at. There'll be an accrual if someone happens to leave. It doesn't matter if they leave voluntarily or involuntarily. That's what will be on this. And like I said, it'll be, it'll be voluntary for the employee to participate in this. And we're looking at an estimated financial impact, and we're looking at about $517,000 for this.
Was there a cap on what employees make? I hope I didn't miss that, but I saw the $25. Is there a point to where they would no longer be eligible if they make over a certain amount of money?
We don't, we don't have a cap, but we have a lower amount for anyone that makes over $25.49.
Okay. So everybody's available with that, with the exception of the list that you gave?
Except the eligibility list.
Okay. Yeah.
Yeah.
And was there a, when you've got the 90-day clawback, I assume that we, it would be available for us to retain the amount still owed out of whatever their final check would be? Is that part of the program?
Yeah, that's part of what we're looking at, is that if someone leaves and, you know, there might be someone that knows they're going to leave and they won't sign up for it, you know, because they know they have to pay the money back. But it's mainly to help, you know, our employees are our most valuable asset. If we don't have our employees, we can't provide services to the county residents. And we're trying to just provide, you know, some help for the people that have stayed that aren't leaving. We are seeing employees leave for, you know, higher salaries that we can't compete with. So this is basically just to help our employees, and we will have a way for them, you know, like I said, they'll have to sign that they're going to stay for a year. And if they leave prior to that, then we would prorate the amount.
And this would be compliant with the state prohibition against bonuses?
Well, it's not a bonus, it's an incentive.
Exactly. That's what I mean, is it's structured in such a way to be compliant with that particular part of state law, because that was one that would obviously be one that we would want to pay attention to.
Right. Absolutely.
Okay. Further questions or comments?
No questions. Thank you.
I'll just clarify as well. This does not replace if we were to enact a COLA for upcoming budgets. So this would not take away from them in any way and, or necessarily go, when would this go into effect?
Well, as soon, as soon as you approve it, that we're ready to, we've got the memorandum that they're going to sign, and we're going to launch it in September, hopefully.
Correct. So if this moves forward next week, we'll be back at your meeting in September with the accounting side of the process. We'll then do an education to employees, and there'll be an enrollment period if they want to participate in this program. Because as Kim mentioned, one way that we're doing this is running a special payroll. So we're wanting, anyone that wants to participate in it, they have to sign up at a certain time. HR will process it, there'll be a special payroll that will go with that, and all the documents will be signed. And then to a question that you had, if they do leave before the 12-month as the agreement, again, the purpose of this is to encourage our employees to stay. We value them. We want to retain our quality employees. And so, but if they do leave us before that 12-month obligation is up, then the amount that is owed back to us is prorated. So if they're here six months of it, then, you know, then six months of it would be paid back to the county, and we would take that out of the final checks. And they're signing that in the agreement.
Okay.
So, and again, our timing would, we would like to, your question is, we'd like to do this as soon as possible, because we also know our employees are faced the challenge of back-to-school costs. And so we felt like this is a really good timing to help our employees.
Further questions or comments?
No, no questions. I mean, I just, comment would be that I think it's a creative solution to what is obviously ongoing workforce challenges and, you know, trying to do what we can in the short term to convince folks to stay and try to meet those demands. And so I think it's creative and smart, and look forward to moving it forward.
Commissioner Thompson, did you have anything you wanted to add?
Nothing further, but thank you.
Okay.
It looks like our auditor would like to make, come in on this.
Okay.
Victor Hulbert, Clay County Auditor. I think this is a very, is a very good idea, and I think, you know, you know, the intent of it is great. I just think, you know, as my job as auditor, I think it's my duty really to present some, some concerns with this that I've, you know, brought before. I think the concern about, you know, potential bonus was something that I raised initially. It is from, you know, rescue plan revenue loss dollars, so essentially it can be used for general operations. So there aren't really rescue plan restrictions, although you could use it potentially as an eligible use as well. But I've been doing just a lot of research about this, because this is something, in reading several state audit reports, which is, you know, what I do in my free time, this is something that the state auditor's office across numerous different state auditors calls out, from, from different office holders, several different findings. You know, I'll cite three essentially, specific to Article Three, Section 39 of the State Constitution and Attorney General Opinion 7255. Here in our backyard, the Smithville Fire District had a chief that, you know, they gave a, they gave bonuses essentially if they met certain performance metrics. He had the MU system where they actually had a retention program for executives, where basically they signed an agreement and said, "If you stay with the, with the university, we'll, we'll give you a retention incentive." And the state auditor office called it a bonus, is against the Missouri Constitution. The City of St. Francis Prosecutor had a, had a bonus, in-a-year bonus program that the state auditor made a, made a finding. Most recently, in 2020 and 2021, the governor's office wanted to do a, you know, an innovative idea and incentive program to reward high-performing employees. The Missouri Legislature and Governor's Council refused to move forward, because they said it violated that section of the Missouri Constitution. So this is a little different, because we're looking at, the question of, as Article Three, Section 39 talks about, is any additional compensation beyond pay for previous work or work that's been completed? And so we have, you know, kind of a different situation we're looking at. Are we going to, we're going to pay upfront, or are we going to pay at the end? Essentially, we're asking for performance over 12 years, and we're paying. So it's kind of a, you know, a moot point of when that is. That's essentially what we are doing, is paying for additional compensation for work that's going to be completed. But also, you know, if you go back one section in the Missouri Constitution, Article Three, Section 38A, there is another state audit of the City of Miller, which talked about the idea of prepaying or paying in advance, which is what we're offering, you know, we're looking at here. And it said, that also violates the Missouri Constitution, because in the state of Missouri, you can't basically lend or offer credit for hours that haven't been worked. So, you know, that's, that's kind of what we're doing here. And I just present administrative concerns regarding, you know, this whole reconciling of if someone leaves, and especially for federal grant reporting purposes of the U.S. Treasury Department, of how much we've expended. And then, and if that gets refunded, does that go back into the account? What if they don't have enough to pay off their balance? Is that just lost federal money? And so I, you know, I respect that, you know, maybe other municipalities have done this. I think there could be a legal avenue to say, to say that this is legal. But I think, just given all these state audit findings, that I'm not, you know, I'm still not comfortable on, so as auditor, as county auditor, I'm just presenting you my concerns. I think this is a valid thing we should do for, for county employees. We should compensate them well. I will, in all fairness, say Boone County is proceeding with something very much like this. They're going to pay them at the end, is what they're doing, and they relied on their council as well in Boone County. Coal County did a premium pay program where they increased their pay slightly, but for a temporary amount of time, and they capped it, and they also made them sign agreements. So that's another option to consider. I just think this county is going to have a follow-up state audit, and I did consult with the state auditor's office. They can't obviously give us advice, but they point, you know, can point me to previous reports. And, you know, so they're going to look at our practices. So I just, I just give an abundance of caution with this, with this program. For some reason, I can't move past it. It just, in processing this, I'm going to have trouble. I'm going to want something in writing before I process a payroll like this. So I appreciate your time. I'm happy to answer any- time. I'm happy to answer any questions.
I appreciate you bringing it because one of the things I was wondering about is if anyone else had already kind of started down this road and maybe run some of the traps for us so that we could learn from, I guess you brought up Boone County, if we could learn from their experience. But it sounds like they are pretty much at the beginning of their process, if I'm picking that up correctly.
Yeah. So I, I pinged the, I asked the Auditors Association Group, you know, what, you know, are they dealing with this issue? And, and yes, they're going to, at the end of December of this year, if you've stayed on, then, then look at making those, those payments. So I think, you know, that is a good, a good precedent. I mean, they're a, you know, first-class county as well. But no one else had really, you know, considered or looked at this, but.
Okay. Very well. Thank you. Any further comments or discussion? Okay. Seeing none. Obviously, this would also be a regular item.
Great.
Very well. So that brings us to the end of our discussion items. Would someone like to go ahead and make a motion related to the issues we've heard this afternoon?
Commissioner, I move that we put 2022-231, 232-253, 258, 259, as well as ordinances 23, 2022-23, 2022-256, and 2022-257 on next week's 6:00 PM's regular agenda with each of the remaining items from today on next week's consent agenda.
Motion been made for the distribution of the items we just heard on our discussion and regular agenda, as was recited by the Commissioner. Discussion? Seeing none. You recognize to close?
I agree.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Very good. That brings us to comments on, on agenda items. Is there anyone from the public, an office holder or an agency who would like to comment on any items not on this evening's agenda? Seeing none. Administrator, do you have any comments you'd like to make at this time?
I have no comments. Thank you.
Commissioner comments? Commissioner Carpenter?
No comments. Thanks.
Sorry, I looked the wrong way. Commissioner Thompson?
No comments. Thank you.
Something that I would just like to raise is perhaps a thought, and that is, I'm, I'm always very impressed with the departments and they come in with different grants that they're able to find. From time to time, we've discussed the possibility of having a grant writer for the administrative part of our government. Obviously, the sheriff does a very good job. The legal, the legal people do a really good job. I'm not saying yes or no. I'm just saying it might be something we should consider. It might be something that would give us a little bit more of a ability to, to get these. And I think in terms of some of the grants that are available through MARK. So I'm just, like I said, I just raise that as a possibility that we might just consider at some future point. With that, approval of agenda of previous sessions, we have none. Are there any written reports?
We had two this month so far. I emailed both of the, all three of your Commissioners plus Diana. No, I didn't. I'm sorry. Okay, great. One of them was a report for fees and revenue from the county clerk. And then the other one was from the auditor on a cash basis report for the month. Both of those were for the month of July.
And everybody got those reports? Very good. Executive sessions are unlisted. That brings us to recess and adjournment.